I think being a student rep.
I'd like to call the May twentieth regular session to order. We have a quorum and if everybody can rise and accept the pledge of allegiance, flag of our kindness. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody had a chance to review, agenda review.
A couple, a couple adjustments on here. For the agenda review, first of all, we mistakenly put Mr. Boyd's employment under five three. And so I asked that that be removed from the consent agenda because administrators don't need to be approved by the board. I've already approved that higher. So it has been placed under information. Eight point three, so my request is to remove five point three from the consent agenda. Because once again, it's been moved to eight point three. And the other adjustment I'd like to propose is for under action items. All right, let me get where I need to read here. Action item six point one, the attachment of resolution three four has has been updated and placed in there. So to be able to remove the original resolution three and four of the supplemental transportation plan and and add the updated one.
The updated one is already, has already been put into your board then. It's just.
Just some minor changes.
Clarifying language.
I didn't make any changes to change this. Didn't make motions to change it.
Yes, you need a motion to remove the five point three and yeah, and and add the updated resolution three and fours.
I can make a motion to amend the agenda by removing five point three, replacing it in eight point three and updating the attachment under action item six point one. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to remove the five point three and move to eight point five and then accept. Change the resolution three four. Moving it and accepting the new resolution. Are there any questions? There are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, next, we are onto our reports. And our first report is a spotlight as middle school leadership recognition. And we have to do that is Shelby Gagman.
Yeah, come on up and Shelby has brought some stuffy stuff there as well. Yes.
Yes.
Here we go.
Hi, I feel like I've met everybody, but I'm Shelby Gagman. I teach student leadership at Seaside Middle School. These are four of our student leaders. This year, I'm just going to read the press release if that's okay. This is from the Oregon Association of Student Councils. Seaside Middle School Student Council receives top honor for student achievement. Seaside Middle School is one of twenty-one high schools and five middle schools in the state, receiving recognition as a high achieving leadership program. Seaside Middle School was awarded with a gold council award at the OASC Spring Leadership Conference this April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The award is sponsored by the Oregon Association of Student Councils or OASC. Sets high standards for student councils and leadership programs and honors them if they can reach or exceed these goals. The leadership programs begin by setting goals in the fall and actively participate in leadership activities and events throughout the year. In order to receive the award, programs must create and encourage activities that promote inclusivity among all students at the school and provide a series of events that includes a variety of different areas, disciplines in the school. Along with involvement in the school, sorry, the font's very small. They must also demonstrate that they are gaining valuable leadership and professional skills that they can take with them outside of school. One of the most powerful lessons we have learned while supporting these leaders is that leadership is not something reserved for a few and it's not limited to titles or positions. It lives in the everyday actions of students in every corner of Oregon schools. These young leaders are shaping the culture of their campuses and extending their influence far beyond the classroom. What is truly inspiring is their unwavering commitment to servant leadership. They do not just participate, they lead with heart. They lift up their peers, create meaningful events that strengthen their communities and bring a spirit of hope, creativity, and inclusion to everything they do. The programs recognized at this level remind us all that when students are empowered, they do not just rise, they help everyone around them rise too. And that's from the OASC Executive Director. That's it.
What are, what are all your names?
Oh, I'm Keely Carr.
I'm Ellie Bennett.
I'm Leila Fink.
Chelsea Mongi.
Wonderful, congratulations. Can't wait to see you guys keep leading these schools.
Exactly.
Awesome. Okay, next in our spotlight is our therapy animal reports.
Sophia and Nikki are here. Come on up.
Where you want.
Welcome back to our Seaside Pacifica Helping Haws project.
I'm Sophia Cave.
And I'm Kate Black. And we're both seniors at Seaside High School. Together, we trained Winston to be a therapy dog as he suggests. Me, our lovely mentor, Susan Penrod, she's helped us schedule many meetings, checked in with us regularly, and approve our Pacifica project.
And then here's a timeline of our Pacifica project. We did all Winston's training in June, as well as presented to the board last June. I'm happy to say that Winston is now a certified therapy dog. He passed all his classes. And then Mr. Cave passed his national exam, April twenty-seventh, so he's official day handler for Winston. And we are on track to present our Pacifica project and Winston's on track to be an official therapy dog at Seaside High School in September.
Why we still think our schools are should use one because there's still growing mental health crisis among teenagers. The pandemic may be over, but students still struggle to catch up academically. And even after return to schools, students still feel isolated in the law.
And there's still shortage of mental health therapists and long wait periods. A therapy dog's presence can lift moods, make people smile, and relieve stress. It can also help students when access and counsel support.
Again, one of my biggest motivators, oh, sorry, go back one. One of my biggest motivators for this project was my dog, Timber. He affected my emotional status completely during COVID. He was there through all the stress, grief, and loneliness. And while all that stress was going on, he was there to give me endless love and affection, which I think.
And then here's an updated picture of Winston. He is now eighteen months old.
Yes, same certifications are the Canon Good Citizen, the Advanced Canon Good Citizen, and the Canon Good Citizen Urban. So this project took a lot of organization. We first purchased a chocolate lab starting in, or three months after that, starting in April twenty twenty-four, we started training with our trainer Katie Foss at the Arnie Kadia Dog Training in Astoria. And then did their own classes.
And we did basic manners one through three, which is basically all sit, stay, sit, lay, and recall. And it's just like basic manners. And then we have an open and advanced open manners, and that's more like a public training. We welcome in public with groups of dogs in stores just to work on his behavior and stuff like that and leash training. And the classes were four weeks long, two days a week, and we closely trained him four to five times.
This project also took a lot of communication. We've been in contact with our trainer for dates and times over training. We got our project approved by the superintendent and contacted Mr. Roberts for permission to coordinate times for for school visits and arrange meetings with our mentor.
We presented the board last June and now and arranged days to meet with Mrs. Cat to socialize Winston with the sister Sage. And we made Winston a step ID badge to get into the school.
So now that Winston's done with all his training, surprisingly, there was a lot more. Travis Cave, the handler, has to get sort of, has to take courses to get certified by the Association of Animal Assisted and Wrenching Professionals. These are all his classes that duck.
And we tracked all of ours on our notes app and we picked it over two hundred hours, not including the handlers' classes.
And we also wanted to give a huge thank you to Mr. Roberts for approving our project and for all of his support through this all. He sent us this kind email inviting Winston to our school to meet Travis Cave and Mickey Black.
We also wanted to give a big shout out to our trainer Katie Foss. She's also a variety of training and she's been a certified trainer since two thousand thirteen.
And then this is a little day in the life of Winston's training and what he's kind of like learned and what we do on the day to day.
Just a moment, make sure everyone can hear it.
Okay, no worries. So what's the cost?
Winston himself is six hundred dollars and then all his best visits so far will, eighteen thousand. And then other classes.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen, sorry.
Well, there.
Training classes, it was six hundred fifty and then.
Altogether was about the hundred. So then going back, sorry, one more. Travis Cave's certification expenses and courses all cost a little over a thousand dollars. So what we got of this project, we got a lot of patience. Training a five-month-old puppy is not for the week for sure, but we did get a lovely thought out of it. We learned a lot about mental health and the effects animals have on humans, like bringing Winston in. We brought him in a couple of times and just seeing everybody's faces light up with joy, he gave him endless love and affection, which I think is amazing for our school district.
And then this project really helped us prepare for the future because we started junior year and already prepared us for time management and just making schedules. We had to make schedules which day who would train him. And then it helped with collaboration. We collaborated with a lot of different people during this budget path.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. It has been so fun working with both of you on this process. To be able to see the vision and see you, see you go through this and, you know, see it through to it actually happening next year. So I'm just, I'm super proud of both of you.
Thank you so much, and I love all the support that you gave us through it all too.
Has Winston walked the halls yet?
Yes, yes, he hasn't with like students, obviously, in the building yet, but after he passed his test, we have walked him through a couple of times and he loves it. So I'm really excited, yeah.
And he will stay here every year?
Yes, so starting next year, he should be officially in the school four to five days a week, maybe with my dad in his office.
Will he, who will he live with?
Uh, he lives with us, my Travis Cave, basically.
So you're going to college next year, so.
Yeah, I'm staying local though, so I will stay with the puppy, thank God. But yes, I'm going to CCC, so is she, so we will still continue to train over summer and stuff, so my dad doesn't have to do that, but we're really excited for the process.
I think this is a great project and very unique and, you know, definitely needed.
Yes, thank you so much.
What are some, yeah, I'm sorry, one more. What are some next steps with this? I mean, what are some next steps?
Um, do you think you'll? The next steps are enjoying the summer with him, basically. Training more, we're just going to continue training every day. And the next steps, I think, just bringing him into the school next year, basically. I think we're going to try to get him into the the last couple of weeks of school, maybe bring him in a little bit more, but other than that, just wait for, I think we already have insurance on him, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, insurance is already covered, so we're just waiting for next year.
Yep.
Dogs are great. Okay, next, we got student business. Ida, you got some student business. Last student business report.
I'll make her.
It's okay, yeah, no, we'll be good. So I'm really excited to announce the new ASB president, so Mackenzie Hay, sorry to interrupt over there. And Slater Martinez, I'll be inducted in June, and so that's super exciting. We're still waiting to hear back about the rest of the ASB members. But I'm also really happy to let you guys know that my spot will be taken over by Miss Ella Crater over here. And she is gonna be great. I just know she's gonna absolutely kill this spot as soon as, I was actually having a conversation with Miss York. And I was like, who would be like the perfect person I think for this role? And we just locked eyes and we were like Ella Crater. And I just knew. And so I immediately like hunted her down and I got her the application and I'm really excited that she agreed to do this. I think it's gonna be great. I just, she's such a bright girl, and so I'm really excited to see how it all works out. ASB had Throwback Week last week and we were able to merge Culture Week, which is my Pacifica, kind of, my Pacifica overall is the multicultural club. And we didn't have time to fit in Culture Week into the school year, but we were able to kind of merge Throwback Week and Culture Week together. And so Multicultural Club was able to host two spirit days of those, so Monday or Tuesday and Wednesday, we were able to include Traditions Day and Role Model Day. So you got to dress up as your role model and then dress up as your tradition, of course. And then the other Throwback Week days were like nineties day. I can't quite remember the other ones, so that's kind of my bad. But we had the blood drive and it was super successful. I think all the spots were filled and so that's exciting. We had Field Day and that was super successful too. We had like footsall outside, football, around the world station for Multicultural Club, and then who will hoop, being all your typical field, field day stations. And then Community Culture Night was a huge success too. That was also a big part of my Pacifica as well. And the Multicultural Club got to perform a Vilepo Florico and we got to dance a bit and it was really exciting. I had a lot of fun learning that dance and we also got to perform it for the assembly, so that was super fun. And Pacifica Project presentations are next week, so I'm excited to hopefully see you guys all there. And that's about all I got. It is my last time being here and so it is really sad and I'm not going to say too much because I'm going to start. Thank you guys a lot for welcoming me. But I'm really excited. Thank you.
And this is specifically the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. Want to confirm? Okay, awesome. Awesome, well, thank you, Ida. What a, what a great thing this has been. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, having you as the first person to, you know, sit at the table has been great, so. We were very blessed, so love it. Big shoes to fill.
No, he's gonna do great. Thank you, thank you, Ravi.
Thank you for your time to get to us.
Yes.
Okay, next, we will have the superintendent's report, Susan.
You can bring up the couple of slides we have there. Okay, so next slide is good timing to talk about, next slide.
Sorry, it's catching up.
There we go, you know, we've got to take time to celebrate, Ida. Ida, you are our first person and these last two years, you've set the bar really high. And it has just been such an honor working with you. I, I have this picture up here of the Beat the Odds time and presentation where I get received such a great scholarship and it was so fun to go to this and see celebrated, yes. And when I reflect a little bit on the work that you've done with us over the last two years, I just really appreciate your confidence to be able to speak up and share a student's voice. I, I particularly think of when we were interviewing new board candidates for appointment and you were really involved in that and asked great questions and your perspective is just so important. So really going to miss you, but very excited for you in your next phase in life and I just want to, want to really thank you for your work on board.
Thank you. I hope you guys come to visit me in New York. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. I really, this has really been like a highlight of my whole high school experience, being able to represent you guys. And so keep a shout out on my little graduation speech, I'll be good.
All right, so we'll move on to the next slide. So a couple of things going on is one of, one of the things at a state level, Senate Bill seven thirty-two is the establishment of every school district forming an equity advisory committee. And that starts in, in the fall. So I just have a little bit of information up here about that equity advisory committees need to begin by September fifteenth. So we've been working on that with the leadership team and then, and then a committee to start the committee. So thanks to the leadership group. And so an advisory committee will be made up of, of staff members, students, parents, and community members. So we're working on right now generating invites to people so that that work, like I said, can start in the fall. What does the district equity advisory committee do? Will they act as an, as an advisory committee to the school board and to the superintendent? And they really, and they really look at the educational equity impacts when we are developing policies, when we're looking at our district-wide climate, and then, of course, experience of our underserved students as well as how to best support our whole community. So every year, as you know, we have to approve our Division twenty-two assurances. And to make sure that we have, we have this committee started will be included in the Division twenty-two assurances. Next.
So is that an educational equity or educational education committee?
An, an educational equity advisor. So how we're moving forward to prepare for this? This year, our district has been going through an equity audit. We received funding from the Northwest Regional ESD. They specifically have REN, which is the Regional Education Network. We worked with a company by the name of Past, Present, and Future Consulting, Katie and Daniel. They've worked with the leadership team, but they did come and interview our students, our staff, our families. They spent a couple of days here doing that. And then they took all the information and compiled it together to share with the administrators. The administrators provided some data and then really being able to have a comprehensive look on how to move forward with our district. So we're really excited about that. Once again, this, this Senate bill requires the superintendent to identify and invite and appoint people to the advisory committee. And, and you're probably wondering, well, I'd like to learn more about what happened, what the information that was pulled out of that equity audit. I'll be sharing that information in the June meeting, so more to come with that. Next slide. I'm happy to share that we have received a grant from the state for summer school. It's always nice to get that information earlier in the year. We got it really late this year, which is challenging, and I want to thank all the staff for being able to, to add to the summer school programs that we already had in place, okay? This summer school round must focus on literacy. And so as I have listed up here, and, and a shout out to Kate and the building administrators for being able to, for us to put this into action. So in July and August, we are going to have first, second, and third graders who are, are not quite reading at grade level to be able to, to come to that summer school. We will also be able to fund jumpstart kindergarten through that. We already have credit recovery planned, which is for our students who need to make up credit so they can graduate on time. And then ninth grade bridge. Some of the requirements of this summer school is it needs to be eighty hours of instruction for kids. So we are really be able, we are really happy to be able to provide that. So more information on that, we'll be reaching out to families soon. Next slide. Also a reminder that we're shifting this year from a retirement breakfast on the last day to a retirement luncheon. We, on the eleventh, we have a half day with students and so we'll be doing some grilling and honoring all of our retirees.
That is Wednesday, correct?
Yes, it's the last days. Yep. It's the last day with students.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. And that's what I got for you today.
Thank you, Susan. Our next business and fiscal service report, Tony.
Yes, so of course, busy with budget and answering questions and things like that. We found out last week that insurance rates for next year have been announced. We have mandatory enrollment again this year, which means everybody needs to re-enroll. There were some plan changes. They raised the deductibles three hundred dollars to keep the costs down below four percent. Before, below a four percent increase. The weighted average of the plan changes were three point three nine percent, so that's good. We have ceased all major purchases for the year so we can close on time. And we also have an interim audit scheduled for the week of June sixteenth.
That increase in the deductible affects our budget or personal?
Personal, yeah.
What's the difference between our regular audit that we get and an interim audit?
So an interim audit is when they gather a whole bunch of information and they ask a whole bunch of questions. And so they kind of split the audit into two parts. We have an interim audit before we close the books and then they ask a bunch of questions. And then in September, October, they come back and finish.
Yeah, two-part deal, okay.
Yep, yeah, when our audits are finished for the year, I mean, we just turn right around and start the one for the next year, you know?
Yep.
Any questions for Tony? Moving on. Administrative reports. Who would like to go first? Yeah, you betcha, Mr. Roberts, please.
Yeah, everything is kind of, all things graduation right now, right? Full steam ahead, as of today, we have a hundred and five young people that we anticipate graduating on the ninth. I want to, I've sent you some correspondence, but I again want to extend the email, nine forty-five AM at the convention center full dress rehearsal on the ninth. Graduation will begin that evening promptly at seven o'clock. So please mark those down on your calendars. I again will follow up to your school email address to make sure that you have those dates. The night forty-five is pictures.
It's full dress rehearsal for us too. Yeah, just the kids.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. How long does a dress rehearsal take or how long do you need to be there? What is the, are you asking? Forty minutes probably. Because what we'll do is take pictures that evening, it's just much easier than trying to coordinate that while the ceremony is happening that evening. So just please mark that on your calendars. And so, yeah, that's, that's a ton of what we're doing, Ida. I don't want to steal, steal any of my thunder, but it's, because it's her thunder. I shared a lot of the things that we've had going on in the last couple of weeks, two other points of things that are really pretty cool that I want to mention is, for the first time in my career here in the Seaside School District, and there may have happened before, previous to this, but we have a national merit qualifier this year. I was, I was notified about two weeks ago of a young person that is National Merit Scholar, which is incredible. And that is based on performance on the PSAT and has one of, they're the qualifying score amongst all the students that take it. It's a certain percentage. I guess in the top fifty thousand in the country, everybody that took it, which is a pretty incredible feat. Secondly, I think it's really important, those of you that may or may not know, our golf team qualified for the state tournament, have been in Tokati, which is just outside of Eugene the last couple of days, and today won a state championship, so. Maybe merits, can I seven strokes? So I want to recognize, obviously, Coach, this is his third state championship with, with our boys' golf team. But Sun Quang, Alex Arden, Logan Norman, Madden Wanderlake, and Landon Ofield. But Sun Kwang, Alex Arden, Logan Norman, Madden Wanderlake and Landon Ofield comprised our varsity golf team today. Bringing home a trophy, so it's super cool, super proud of them. Plot back from being down a couple of strokes yesterday and kids played exceptionally well there, so.
Jason.
Hey, here we go. Just want to go let, let you guys know that we've kind of transitioned and you probably heard about moving to a Raptor app. And I don't know if you guys were on there and getting those messages when we have drills and stuff. But in that transition of trying to be able to account for all of our staff and kids and doing it electronically, it's, it's a process. We had our last drill of the year today at the high school. And we had really good success rates as far as staff and, and students being accounted for in a very reasonable amount of time. So I was very excited about how we're progressing with that. And it's going to become really handy if we ever have the, hopefully we don't have the big catastrophe and we have to reunify and communicate with, with our students, our staff and our parents. Also, I have sent all of you the copy of the end of the year schedule, which has for the high school, it has items like our sports awards night, scholarships night, you know, the graduation one already. And it just gives you those time dates that you want to be able to stop by for those things. I wanted to make sure that you had access to that. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Who's next, Julie?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we had a great turnout for our Kinder Connect event last week. And in my eleven years as principal, putting on Kinder Connects, about half of our families show up. So we had about forty-three families show up, so I'm thinking about ninety students next year. So that's kind of nice to be able to project. And we also have a reading incentive program going on right now. The Gateway Masonic Lodge, they provided six scooters and six bikes for our students. So they are reading books and doing book reports and turning those in for a chance to win a scooter or a bike. Very exciting for the summer. We have our cookie fun run here on Friday. So our students will be coming up, the puffins will be marching up the hill to run a few laps around for our jogathon around the track. Give them a cookie and a water and head back down the hill. Hopefully it won't be so hot this year. Last year they would come, came back covered in water and chocolate, but they were so happy. So we also have our field day. It's under the sea is our theme this year. And I'm hoping for a warm day, but it's usually cold on field day for us. But personally, I'm hoping for a warm day because we've got a dunk tank. And I may or may not have said I would get into that. And Whitney, come on down on June ten. And we'll also have a jump house. And of course, we've got field trip season and full thing happening. And the last four days of school, we do Camp Learned A Lot, which is camp songs around the flagpole at the beginning of the day. So if you like camp songs, come down and sing with us, it's pretty fun though.
Thank you, Julie. Hi Jeremy.
Hi, Ms. Julie did a great job kind of explaining all the end of the year activities. Personally for me, I'm just winding down my time in the Seaside School District. So I'm spending as much time as I possibly can with kids and, and staff and, and, and parents. And just really enjoying these last, these last, this last month with my seaside community. Thank you.
Yes, Steve. Hi Kate.
We had seventeen people pass Elba this year. That means that seventeen kids will be exiting out of E L D services, which is great. And we still have a few scores yet to be trickling in, so more, more to come. We're getting through, getting through spring state testing. And some stragglers left and all the admin and the teachers, everybody's really working hard to catch, catch everybody up for state testing. So thank you to all of you guys for doing that. Susan told you all about summer school. We can't wait, we're very excited about that. And that's about it for Kate.
Wendy. That's all.
First of all, I just wanted to give a shout out for multicultural night. So multicultural night was the end of the month in April. We had student performances, which was really cool. It was really well attended. It was definitely a collaborative effort, but just wanted to really give a shout out to the multicultural club for helping to support us in that. But also a big shout out to Natalie Dyeroff, Jane Foreman and Shelby Gagnon, who really helped to get that organized and planned and off the ground. And so that was a really amazing event. Some of, I saw some of you there, but hopefully we'll be able to continue that for next year. Also, we celebrated teacher appreciation at the beginning of this month. And we appreciate our educators all the time, but I just really appreciate them this time of year because there's just so much going on and so many things to kind of check the boxes on. So big shout out to all of the educators in Seaside School District. We're the same, we're, we're doing field trips. We did the zoo last week, we did the armory today with eighth grade. We're doing Omsi with sixth grade on Thursday. So lots of fun things happening for our kids. We have spirit week, end of the year spirit week next week, wrapped up with field day on Friday for us. We will do a beach day on June sixth. If anybody wants to come down, we'll be down on the beach. And then eighth grade promotion for us is June tenth at ten thirty in the high school gym. So please come and attend that. You're all welcome to doing that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I think that is it for our unanimous greater reports. Is Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen, are you here?
We do have, we do have her report though, so you can take a look at that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next is our union report.
Okay, well, that's right now, we're teachers, we're a little stressed. It's the end of the year, we're getting through testing, we're getting through end of year wrap ups. We're trying to make lists for next year, get supplies in. Our rooms are chaotic and of course, students are very excited for summer. So for the most part, we're just kind of holding on. But appreciate everything that everybody did for us for teacher appreciation week. It was very well received, we felt very appreciated and loved and got lots of great lunches. But pretty much, we are also counting down the days. And just trying to get everything finished between testing and field trips. And we're like, wait, I needed those days to teach, oh, I guess I'm going Omsi. Kind of feeling right now. And I'm very appreciative for them, but also just like, ah. So that's kind of where we are in celebrating our grads. It's my first year having grads like kids I've taught graduating, so it's kind of special to us.
Thank you, thank you, Jane. Megan, are you on, on the line?
I believe she has participated in sports physicals.
Oh, wonderful, okay, thank you, Sal. Okay. Okay, next we have our public comment, we have other reports, sit down there.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Nope, no other reports, okay. That's all good. All right, the meeting will now be open to receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public tape to share their thoughts with the board. The board's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If follow up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do so. Remember that we are all role models for our students. Please share your thoughts respectfully. Should any public comment include complaints regarding a personally identifiable staff member, the board chair will direct the speaker to the proper administrative, excuse me, administrative process found in board policy K L. Public complaints. Speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Anybody online?
No, I had a bunch of it.
Okay. Moving on. Incent agenda, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions? There are no call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We have Chris Peters here to share about the transportation supplemental plan report. Come on up.
Welcome.
Welcome, hi, Chris Peters, transportation provided, sorry. The pollen shifted on Sunday and boy, it got me good. The transportation supplemental plan that we have in place was last approved in nineteen ninety-two. Oh. Before we had the configuration schools. So it's about time. And so we proposed a, a new supplemental plan, updates that to address the school configurations we have now. After we get approval, we'll submit that to the state board for their approval. Supplemental plan basically identifies when the district is required to transport students. The Oregon rule statute says districts required for elementary students that live more than one mile from the school and for secondary students more than one point five miles from the school. Or if those students are identified and approved by a supplemental plan. The purpose of the plan is to allow the school board to allow students that cannot for health or safety reasons within those statutory limits, be able to get a ride to school. We provided three things, two resolutions, three and four, which you had an update on this today. After some legal consult, it documents the hazard conditions that are within those one and one point five miles respectively for each of the schools. And it also codifies a new district wide walk zone. We've had a K through five walk zone because the Civic Ridge Elementary is located there. The secondary school has the same walk zone dictated by the hazards that are around the surrounding area. And those are in figures one and two of the supplemental plan. We looked at a lot of different things in establishing that walk zone formally. Traffic conditions, the amount of traffic we see, the intersections, the presence of crosswalks and sidewalks or the absence of them. And also the presence or absence of signals and lights to help students cross on a regular basis across any time of the year. All these conditions are documented in figures one and two. There are three strategies that led to what's behind the supplemental plan that we will transport students that are inside the one mile, one point five mile. If we have special education students that are non-I P and that dictates that they need transportation services. We have students that are inside those areas that there is not a safe route to school inside that, those hazard areas. And the last thing is to codify something we've been doing. So within the walk zone, for example, if a student lives down by Cooper and Wana, and we already have a bus stop there because the people that are across the street get on the bus and we can cross them with a note from the school administrators, we'll transport them so they don't have to walk all the way up the hill. So that's a good kind of a, those are the three reasons that we've put in supplemental plan that require transportation. If we approve this, the impact to the district is there are a hundred and twenty-one students in the new district wide walk zone. There'd be forty-one elementary students that would be approved for transportation that live within a mile of the school. And there'd be twenty-five secondary students approved for transportation that live within a mile and a half. And those numbers could change every year, but based on our moment.
Right.
Do they have, is it an additional cost or?
No, it's a not additional cost. We're already, we've already been doing the same transportation. This really just identifies and documents for the department.
Any questions for Chris? Will it bump our attendance?
Right. Get the kids to school.
I don't think so.
Was this like, I just imagined there was a lot of, lot of pressure with the change of the schools that we kind of rearranged. It's amazing, it's that, I mean, it just, this is great to address it, but it's probably been something I'm sure you were met with right away.
Yeah, it was something that when I came on, one of the first things I had to do is submit an annual report. And it was talking about the supplemental plan. And I didn't know what it was. And so I was inquiring around with it. And basically, we were adhering to all of the things we talked about already, but it wasn't documented. And so going through that and documenting the why, we looked at the safer routes to school and just looked at all the things we already had in place. And then wanted to establish it as more official and then get back to the department of that.
That's excellent, thank you. Great job.
All right, any other questions for Chris today?
I just want to say thank you to you for your diligence on this. It was really great to work with you on it. And it's a, it's a long overdue update and I just appreciate all your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll need a motion.
I move to accept the updated transportation plan presented.
A second supplemental then.
There's a motion in board book. Because these are resolutions, if we could specifically mention the numbers, that'd be great.
Would somebody help me? I don't have the workbook thing up, I'm looking at the, the paper.
I move to approve resolutions number three and number four for the supplemental transportation plan.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution three and four for the supplemental transportation plan. Are there any questions? There are none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have disposal of district property school bus, Susan.
Yeah, so you'll see in, in your attachment there that I'm requesting that the Seaside School Board declare the two buses listed there below as surplus property and authorize their disposal, they're, they're no longer useful to us. As we've done in the past, I also recommend that, that these buses be sold to Warren, Warrenton School District because they're interested in purchasing these buses.
I move to approve a disposal of two school buses as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the disposal of two school buses as presented. Are there any questions?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, good.
So we're removing two buses, but we're not going to buy any buses for the budget for next year. We're still good on buses.
Yes, we have more buses than, we, we have more buses than we need. And we are still, we're still good.
Susan, just for kicks, what, what are these, what are these worth on a used school bus? Are, are, or is it to make a sweetheart deal with it, which is great, but I was wondering.
We work with a, a bus company, Peterson, is one of the best companies that we work with to get like a, you know, a value on it. Something similar to like a Kelley Blue Book that you would use. I'll also mention too that we do have two buses that, that have been on order that will be arriving soon. When I first started in the district and we ordered a new bus, we'd get it within six months. Now it's over eighteen months to be able to get them. So we do have those two new buses coming in to replace that we ordered in a long time ago.
Yeah, motion has been made and seconded to approve disposal of two school buses as presented. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, this one, these two buses are in addition to last month's bus or, right?
The, the one that we surplus last time, yes.
To Warrenton, right?
Yes.
Any other questions? No, all right, the motion, the motion has been made to approve disposal of two school buses as presented. Any other questions? There are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Here he is. Next, we have board reflections or announcements. Do they have anything to reflect on? Are there any announcements to make? I would.
Just hope everyone has a good end of the year, I know it's a lot.
I want to thank I did again for being so faithful and for two years you were here. So we're, we're super, super proud of you and super excited for your next adventure over in the Big Apple.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, that should be, that sounds so exciting.
I'll say I owe you for a short period of time, but you're very inspiring. You're very infectious.
I, I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Brian, I'd just like to say thanks to, to everybody, certainly that's an exciting time of year, but it just does kind of mark passing of time. It's pretty, pretty cool time of year for, for everybody involved, for the teachers, the students. So that's pretty neat. Number two, I did have my back surgery. I had my back fused three weeks ago. So I apologize for not being there in person. I plan to be there next time, but my, my limit, limited mobility right now. So thanks for your patience.
I'm glad you're here, at least on Zoom, Kevin, so we. I'm glad you were here, uh at least on uh Zoom, Kevin. So we uh I'm I'm sure you're feeling better. You were three months, right?
Yep, yep, getting better every day.
Awesome. That's great to hear. Uh, we do have the board policy first reading, so make sure you get uh everybody have a chance to read that, a little light reading for the evenings. Um.
And just reach out to me if you have any questions.
Yep.
That's.
Pretty much it. And um now we will go into executive session. To consider the employment of a public. Of a public employee, staff member. Or individual agent as per O R S one nine two point six six zero. Two subsection A superintendent evaluations. So we're going to take a five minute recess and we'll come back.
Oh, I know. Thank you. You know.
Okay, we're good to go. All right, we have uh extra day executive session. We're back into regular session. Is there anything else to come before the board today? If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Kevin.
Good night.